Good afternoon, and if you would please join in the Pledge of Allegiance before we begin our council meeting, thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now to begin our council meeting, August 1st, 2018, 12:00 noon. May I please have a roll call?
Brad Hen.
Here.
Sean Brewster.
Here.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Greg Gils.
Here.
Tom Hagers.
Here.
Thank you. First on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. There are no changes, so do we have a motion to approve the agenda that is before you?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. And a roll call, please.
Gils.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hagers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we will accept any public comments if there are any. There are none, so we will move on to the consent agenda. One thing I'd like to point out, thank you Frank for showing this to us, in our minutes, we will have one correction to amend our minutes. It was noted that in that very first paragraph, after roll call was taken, let's see, middle of the page, the last sentence, it is also, it also is for no parking at any time on E6 Street, we'll amend that to say the north side, but it does reflect in the ordinance the north side, so that was just a little missing of that on the minutes, so we'll correct those minutes. Otherwise, any questions, comments regarding the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Hagers.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Thank you. Into new business now. At this time, number four, we will consider the third and final reading of the ordinance amending the downtown parking and parking restrictions on a portion of E6 Street. One thing I'd like to point out is, after we go through this process, then approving the third reading, then we approve the ordinance. Lyle, I'd like to get together and see about the communication with those property owners so that they then can communicate with any tenants that they may have, and then also just talk about, make sure we get the communication and maybe reminders as we start to enforce that.
Also, it's not in effect until it's published, which would probably be up Saturday.
Thank you. Yeah, so there's a little bit of time.
And then I'm assuming, Lyle, you won't want to enforce it until it's signed, correct?
Right.
That will not be done prior to Saturday?
No. So I think what we're going to need to do is, it gets published, we'll talk about the signage, communicate with property owners, so the ordinance will go into effect, but I think it would be wise of us to make sure we're communicating that, get the signage up, and then begin the enforcement of it, so. Thank you, and determination of where the signs go. So, I have heard nothing more of the parking regarding downtown, overnight parking downtown, or the restrictions that we would like to set forth on E6 Street. If we are ready, is anyone wanting to make a motion to approve the third reading?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. And a roll call, please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Hagers.
Aye.
Wonderful, and then we would need a motion then to approve the ordinance?
Make the motion to approve.
Support.
Thank you. If there's no discussion, a roll call, please.
Gils.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hagers.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Hagers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Thank you.
Number six, we are approving the contract and bonds for the airport snow removal equipment building. Seems like this is another one we talk about a lot, but this time that it comes before us is to approve the contract and the bonds. Any questions regarding the contract for the snow removal equipment at the airport?
The whole Buy American thing that's been straightened out.
Any other questions?
That was on a different project. That wasn't this one? No, this is the building that was actually on the truck. Oh, that's right, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. But there's still Buy American requirements for this project. There's a clause in the contract. Mm-hmm. That's required by the FAA if we want to use the federal fleet.
So this contract is with Larson Contracting, Contracting Central LLC of Lake Mills, Iowa, in the amount of $284,330. There's no further questions, discussion, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. And a roll call, please.
Gils.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hagers.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Okay, we will be discussing the city manager position profile with Henson Consulting. Brent is waiting by his phone to answer our call, so I'm going to get that set. What he would like to do is walk us through the letter that is given before you and the profile position, answer any questions that may have come up that you have, and so that we can continue to move forward with the schedule they have set for us. So, we are going to get him on the phone. We'll do that line. Maybe this line. House Speaker. Thank you very much. How do you use this phone? It's not a cellphone. I'm kidding, at least it's not rotary. 253. You watching me dial? Excuse me, it's not dialing, it's pushing buttons.
Do I have to dial a number to get out?
No.
You're right, I paused, didn't I?
You ever watched a child tree? Oh geez. Ange, would you care to dial this number for me, please? I dialed 65 instead of 35. Can you imagine?
That's called a level or anything.
Thank you.
I saw it happen.
Anybody watching on HTC? Godfather's Pizza. Looks good. I like it. Can you hear?
Hello?
Hi Brent, this is Tricia Mandering and the council, we are in the middle of our council meeting, and we are now on line item number seven to go over the city manager position profile.
Very good, you guys move very efficient.
Yeah, it was a short agenda, and not that we're on a time crunch at all, we'd like to take our time going through this, so we welcome you to go ahead and do your introduction and walk us through the process.
Absolutely. Okay, well, and hopefully you'll forgive me here, I didn't make it home for lunch as soon as I planned to, so I'm probably going to have a switch over here at some point from my hands-free phone to my regular phone here, but so just be prepared for that in a couple minutes. But anyway, so hopefully you guys got a chance to review everything that I sent to you with profile, with the potential revised schedule, and related to the advertising. So I guess I just kind of start out with if we have any questions right off the bat, I'd be happy to address those, so anything anybody had related to those materials?
Let me look around for you. I did not have any questions. I did want to point out, if you all noticed, the scheduling of changing for interviews from the September 28, 29 more to October 5, 6. Okay. Any questions, council to my right yet, and to my left?
I assume that this timetable is realistic and not overly optimistic.
Yeah, I really do think this is going to be a good timetable, so basically what we did is with that extra week, we built that into essentially the advertising period. We didn't change anything as far as, you know, when we would go out to advertise, we just added a week essentially to our advertising, which I think is helpful, I mean generally speaking, we consider to open up time to advertise, which is what we were at before, but now we'll basically be at five weeks of advertising, which doesn't hurt anything.
Sure. Okay, good question, thank you Pete. Thank you Brent. Any other questions? Council to my left? All right. Oh, we have one more question from Tom Hagers.
Okay.
Yeah, hi Brent, I'm just looking at the wage and benefit package in your, in your search process document, and you make note of the fact that you felt that the low end of 90,000 is more applicable in today's market. My question is, is 105 too low on the top end?
Well, you know, certainly, you're going to attract different candidates in part, I mean obviously, size of community, size of organization has a lot to do with that as far as what, you know, who you're going to have looking. Certainly, it's helpful to have, you know, a higher salary range in some cases, but, you know, I think that if you're going to do that, the council has to be comfortable that that would be, okay, for that perfect candidate, that fits all our, you know, exactly what we're looking for, that we would be willing to go to that level. I'm not an advocate of adjusting the salary range just to kind of look better, because ultimately that can result in disappointment for both sides. You know, just like Parisin, I think if you hit the average salary, you know, across comparable communities, you guys have been kind of right on target with what you've been paying. I think if it's, you know, probably into that more like, you know, high, above 105, you're certainly being above, you know, a little bit above market. Now that doesn't mean that that might not be a decent strategy, but if you were going to raise that level from 105, then I encourage you to make sure that you're all comfortable, hey, if we got the ideal candidate, we'd be willing to go to 110, or whatever that number may be.
Sure.
But this would be the range that you will communicate with any candidates, correct?
Yeah, that's what we would communicate with the candidates, and we've seen it both ways. When we get into the actual, you know, interviews and the council, you know, selects somebody to negotiate with, we've actually seen it both ways. We wouldn't think that we'd ever end up, you know, below the advertised range for the final salary, but we've actually ended up there a couple times that I could, I could tell you here in recent memory in the last couple years. That's just been kind of a circumstance in both cases where you had a little less experienced candidate that was willing to step that lower range to get the job, and probably would be bought up over time. But we've also seen the reverse where, you know, you go and you advertise at a certain range and you have that, you know, just absolute ideal candidate that says, well, I really need to be a little bit above that. Now I think that tends to be a little bit stickier for councils than it's kind of like, well, they better be awful good if we're going to do that, so, you know, it just really depends on the circumstance, but certainly I feel very comfortable with that 90 to 105 range as something I can go out and sell to potential candidates as a good market fair range, and certainly, I guess, you know, if time goes on and the council's going to, you know, kind of if they do a good job for the city, then the council's going to treat them right and give them, you know, wage increases down the road, that's helpful as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? There are none right now Brent, so I welcome you to go in with your next step.
Okay, absolutely. So, some other things that I mentioned, and I guess if there's, if there's any kind of tweaks at all to the position profile, we'd be happy to make those, but definitely we want to kind of, after you guys, you know, pending your approval, we want to get out and hit the street with this and start, you know, disturbing that position profile, so certainly, if there's even any little, you know, grammatical corrections or anything that you see there, we think we represented everything fairly and straightforwardly there, but if there's any, any even little changes you see, please let us know right away, but otherwise, that's kind of what we're going to hit the street with.
Okay. One thing I was wondering is, would it benefit you to have a copy of maybe our goal planning session that we did in December of 2017, so as candidates may inquire with you or want further information, that's something you could provide to them, or we could?
Yeah, and I, yep, and I do believe, actually, I do have a copy of that. Mark had gotten that when he came and visited, so let me look and see, make sure that, yeah, so it's from December of 17, so that's great, great information to be able to share.
I guess Ange already took care of that and gave a copy to Mark, I didn't know that, so that's wonderful. It's okay, we'll talk here, too.
It was on Friday.
Yep, yep, so certainly any information like that is helpful, and I know there was a whole packet that you'd have been able to provide to Mark, and I've got that now, so that's, that's just great. So, yep, so that sounds good. As far as kind of the benefit package, we talked a little bit about wage business, so if you guys are comfortable where we're at, I think that that's a good range. Just any questions on that part of the memo related to benefits? Because sometimes, you know, it's just depending on what the council's past, you know, dealings have been in terms of their city administrator, they may or may not be familiar with kind of all the things I listed there as kind of the points of negotiation for a contract. And really, obviously, it's premature because we don't know who our candidate's going to be at this point, or who the person's negotiating with, but I think it's just helpful at this point to kind of talk through these things so everybody kind of understands what the basic parameters are likely to be in that negotiation. So, any questions on, as far as benefits though, or common practice, anything like that?
Sure.
I've got one thing, the car allowance, city vehicle mileage reimbursement there.
That's mine.
We actually have two vehicles here at our office that the city manager uses.
Yep.
And then in the event they wouldn't be available and they need to take their personal vehicle, we do mileage reimbursement at the federal rate, so.
I think that's a perfectly good policy, yep, you'll just have to, you know, when we get that negotiated standpoint, if they say, well, you know, I really just only want to drive my personal vehicle and I want a mileage reimbursement, I really, I really doubt that that's going to ultimately be a make or break issue for either party. It is helpful to have those city vehicles available, so ultimately that was just something to make you aware of, that's a point, potential point of discussion, it sounds like what you've been doing is very reasonable and very common, so.
I have a question more for Ange probably than for you Brent, but the severance pay, do we have a policy on severance pay now in the current contract, or the contract we had with previous?
Hmm, I've never really looked at Scott's contract, so I would have to look at that. I don't believe so, the way that this is explained, I don't remember ever doing anything like this.
Yeah. Sean wasn't under a contract.
And Sean was not under a contract.
No, that would be a deviation from fast practice.
Okay.
Okay, and what I've got, I do have Scott's contract in front of me, and so it was, and we're talking on severance pay, correct? I think I heard.
Yes, we're on severance pay, yep.
Okay, 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 so basically, I would say Scott had 90 days because it is, oh wait, oh 60 days, I'm sorry, 60 days severance is what he had.
Okay.
Yep, and that is something that has increased over time, you know, of course, this original contract was from 2002, you know, that's been a few years ago, it was right near the start of my career, so I don't want to say it was like forever ago, but it was, you know, it's been a few years. And so I do think things have changed a little bit in that regard, and that is definitely a topic that councils are often have lots of questions on, but it's definitely something that we have candidates have lots of questions on as well, and we just kind of wanted to have that discussion, you know, I know, you know, I can tell you, my last two contracts, one in a city of 3,000 and in my current city of 7,000, I've had six months pay and benefit in that, and I think that's relatively typical, but like I said, the lowest that we really have seen in recent times has been four months, so that's just kind of what we're seeing out there in the market.
And Brent, this is Micah, the city attorney. What your packet doesn't address, of course, is that that's triggered only under certain circumstances.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, if you're talking dismissal with cause, with just cause, that's a completely different thing than.
Brent, this is Brad. Do you see a lot of cities offering contracts with the potential city managers?
I think that that is the norm. I think there's few out there that do not operate with a contract, but I would say that's the norm.
Okay, thanks.
And that's an annual thing, or a multi-year?
For the contract length?
Yeah, for the contract, yep.
Yeah, you know, what's common, I think, I would say what I see, you know, sometimes it's a, you know, okay, it's two years to start and then it automatically renews unless it's canceled by either party, that's common, you know, I think if I remiss contract, it was just basically like, well, you know, you decide to get rid of me, here's what you have to do, and if I decide to leave, here's what I have to do, you know, it's basically, otherwise it just continues on, you know, forever. It's really kind of whatever your practice and/or approach is there, but I would say continuous because there's usually, you know, if you're doing like a, you know, two-year with a three-year contract with a renewal provision, there's usually like a 60 or 90 day notice you have to, that either party would have to give to non-renew, you know, that, as we get into more specifics, but you do see a variety there. Some of them are fixed terms, some of them are continuous.
Okay. So what we have now is the city manager word will, thank you, I want to make sure I use the right word, to the mayor council, but I believe the contract then explains the details of the things weren't working out, how that process would go through, and what I just asked Ange, I wrote it down, if she could give all of our council members a copy of what Scott had had, that way you could be familiar with what we had in the past. Didn't have one with our last city manager.
Have we done any labor contracts?
Yeah, possible, you know, I mean, just depending on the candidate, theoretically speaking, they, they might not request the contract, but I would say that that would be unusual, you know, for the, for the most part, I just can't think of any of our, you know, I mean, the 20 searches I've worked on in the last five years, I cannot think of any that we didn't end up doing a contract, it's just, you know, kind of, I mean, it's security for both parties, and it's very typical in this kind of work.
Okay.
Brent, I've got a question for our people here, so just hang in there. Have we done any labor contracts in the city up to this point?
Scott's is the only one I'm aware of, other than the union contracts.
Other than union, yep. Otherwise, it's all performance-based, correct?
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah.
That's what we do now.
So Brent, from your perspective and knowledge and experience, do other cities, is the labor contract for the city manager usually the only one that they do as well?
Yeah, I would say it, you know, sometimes you'll see them for belief chiefs, for example, but I would say that the city administrator or city manager is typically by contract, but then there, you know, sometimes other department heads.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions regarding the severance pay? Like Brent had pointed out, they're seeing, rarely seeing anything less than four months, but up to nine months. Is that something we need to decide upon right now with you Brent?
Oh, I, no, I don't think so. That was more, I wanted to just make you aware of that, and really, you're not going to end up having to decide on that.
Right.
Till we get to the final negotiation.
Because that could become a part of it, right?
Exactly. It's going to depend on the situation, it's going to depend on the candidate.
Sure.
And, but it's just more make you guys aware of it and get you thinking about it, and don't be shocked if somebody comes and asks for six months severance, because that's really not that outlandish for this type of position. It doesn't mean that you have to grant that, but just don't be shocked, oh wow, I can't believe this person's being so unrealistic, so.
Okay, thank you. The other thing to point out in case council isn't aware of this, the service club or health club right now with our Northwest Iowa Community College Lifelong Learning Rec Center, what kind of offer do we have with them now for employees or the city manager, Ange? Is it a full or a discount? Don't know?
I think there's a slight discount, but you can have it be.
Right, so we have something.
A payroll deduction, basically.
Sure, we have that already in place, and we've had that in place, so.
There's a discount at the Courtyard, too.
Okay, yep, thank you. That's right, there's two.
And that may be one of those things, you know, most things, what I encourage you when you get into the contract stage is, you know, you might get asked for this, that, or the other thing as far as benefits, I would say for the most part, you should just say, hey, we go with what's in the employee manual, you know, your exceptions would be stuff like vacation time to start, you know, the severance pay, potentially vehicle agreement, although it sounds like with your policy, that probably is similar for other employees. You know, there's some of those things that are just common, and some things that are less common, like you might, you know, you might get somebody that comes and says, well, I want to request, you know, this much, you know, this many additional personal days, or I want to have, you know, a lower back on my employee health insurance, I'd say, ah, you know, you know, we're not really willing to negotiate on that. I mean, I think that there's, there's some of those things that people might ask because they just, you know, hey, may as well ask, you know, and you're just better off just pointing back and saying, wow, here's what we offer for employees, and that's just kind of what we're, what we're willing to do, so.
Wonderful, okay.
So, a question for us is, do we have to make a decision on whether we're going to pursue a contract-based agreement, or?
Um, I think, again, that's something that sort of ends up, oh, I'm sorry, was that question not for me?
It's kind of, it's kind of for everybody in a way, because I'm thinking that in your, just listening to you, you refer to contract quite easily, and if we're going to be communicating with candidates like you will be, is that part of the, you know, vernacular that we want him to use, is, you know, we'll wait till the contract period or whatever else if we're not going to offer a contract, if we're going to offer an agreement, or an offer of employment? So do we need to decide as a council whether or not we're going to pursue a contract on this?
And is that something you need to know today Brent? Because in the past, we did have a contract with Scott. And like I said, we all need to see copies of that. I have a copy, I haven't read through it in a long time, so that you can understand the language that we had used in the past.
Since we've handled the same position two different ways now, probably shouldn't make a decision.
Yep, so is that something you need to know right now today Brent, as far as the contract?
What I'd encourage you to do is to say, we are, we would be, we are open to that, we won't necessarily, at this stage, that probably won't be things that candidates will be asking, but certainly when we get to kind of interview weekend, that'll be on their minds, like if they're really locked in and feeling like, man, I feel super positive about this position and how things are going with this process and et cetera, they may be asking, so what's the council's position on, you know, as far as a contract? And so certainly we need to know by then. I would encourage you to not rule anything out at this point, just because I think that could be perceived to red flag to some candidates if you just say, hey, you know, no how, no way, we're not doing a contract. I don't think just because you have a contract means that somehow that means that that person's going to have all kinds of juicy provisions that you wouldn't otherwise offer. I think what, you know, that contract ultimately just reflects an understanding between, you know, a professional administrator and you guys as a governing body.
Sure, so that, okay, so that's something we will look into, what we have in place now, so that when it comes time with the interviewing process, we'll have that secure and ready.
say, hey, you know, no how, no way, we're not doing a contract. I don't think just because you have a contract means that somehow that means that that person's going to have all kinds of juicy provisions that you wouldn't otherwise offer. I think what, you know, that contract ultimately just reflects an understanding between, you know, a professional administrator and you guys as a governing body.
Sure. So that, okay, so that's something we will look into, what we have in place now, so that when it comes time with the interviewing process, we'll have that secure and ready.
Exactly. You've got the time, and like I said, that's why, at this stage, this is almost premature, but just from our experience, it's like, let's start talking about it early so you have the information, you have a chance to think it through.
Right, it gives us time to prepare if that's something we want to do. Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other questions regarding benefit package, wages benefit package? There are none on the council's side yet? No, just Sean, making sure? Okay. All right, so next is the future steps in the process. Do you want to go over that with us, Brent, please?
Yep, absolutely. So what we're looking for today is your approval of the physician profile and authorization to begin advertising, and then basically, we would start on that process tomorrow, and then, you know, we'll get the ad out on all the sources we discussed, ICMA, the International City County Management Association website, Iowa League, South Dakota League, and Minnesota League. That's our advertising plan. And then we would start making contact with qualified candidates. We've actually been able, through the one-on-one interviews and through some other contacts we've made with some area administrators, we've already started building a pretty good list, I think, of contacts there, and we'll be making those contacts. And then we would be essentially, we sit back, we are receiving applications all by email, so we're going to provide the mayor with the email password so she can just kind of monitor those applications as they come in. It's a really nice, smooth way to do things. And then basically, we'll get to the September 5 deadline for applications, and then Mark and I are going to come back, and we'll both visit you on September 12, and we'll propose in a special meeting for then. So really, the council's next step in the process, other than if you have somebody that you think of that is qualified, that would be a great fit for this position, and either sending them our way or recruiting them to file an application, other than that, you know, really, your next big step in the process would be September.
Whoops. Are you still there?
Yep.
Okay, good. I just moved the microphone on accident. So our next step would be September 12, special meeting, 4:30 in the afternoon.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions regarding that, the next few weeks that take place with how the position is advertised, acceptance, et cetera? No questions to my left or to my right? Wonderful. Again, if you have any recommendation or suggestions, we can send those over to Brent, and then if you know of anybody interested, refer them to that email address, which is in your packet of where to send the resumes to. Okay, wonderful. Anything more that we need to go over then, Brent?
Yeah, the last thing that I would mention, and again, this is sort of, just to get you thinking, as far as the interview weekend, I included in my memo, just kind of, hey, here's a schedule of how we've done it before, but kind of get you guys thinking about, hey, how do we want to do this? How do we want to handle, you know, as you can see on the schedule and the memo, you know, Friday night is more about a, you know, kind of more informal basis, to get to know the candidates a little bit, for them to get to know your town a little bit more. And then Saturday moves into the formal interviews. We can do this kind of however the council would like, and you've got a little bit of time to think about it, and really, that September 12 meeting is when we try to get all of that nailed down, as far as precisely how, you know, who's going to be involved in the process, how we would approach that, et cetera. But you can just see the, you know, kind of the schedule that we've used in the past, and that's very flexible, but just the general idea being Friday evening is informal, and a little bit of semi-formal with the, you know, with the reception, and then Saturday is the more formal stuff. And then basically, we're trying to put you in a position to be able to make an offer on Saturday afternoon of the interview weekend. So any questions that anybody had on that process, and certainly any input that you guys have specific to what you'd like to see is very welcomed at this time also.
I do have a question about the selection and process. Is that typically normal, you interview in the morning, and then that afternoon, you want to make a decision? Do you allow any time for thinking, or, you know, let us do a little soul searching? Or do you want that decision made, boom-boom interview, and decision-making, all in one day?
You know, it, what we're going to bring you is, we are going to bring you all five candidates that could do the job. That's our goal, is to bring you all qualified candidates that could do the job. And then you need to figure out, basically through your observations, you know, the Friday, Saturday, you know, kind of how that goes. You know, what we're hoping is that, you know, everybody will kind of be on the same page, and wow, you know, we've got this person that just, this is our person, we want this person, we can all agree on this. It doesn't always work that way. You know, we have seen a process, you know, I've been involved before where, you know, the council had to have a couple follow-up meetings in the week and a half following the interviews to figure out where they wanted to go. What I've found is, the majority of the time, the council is ready to make a decision, even if there's, you know, two or three top candidates. They kind of know who their top candidates are and can kind of just, you know, discuss through and come to consensus. That's what we want to try to have as the default. That doesn't mean that that has to be that way. If the, you know, if you guys get through the interviews and you're like, gosh, you know, we just, we just really don't know, we need more time to think about this, we can adjust the process at the end to allow for that. It's really, ultimately, at the end of the day, you guys have to be very satisfied as a governing body that you got the right person for the position.
Sure. So there is that opportunity, that if we needed to do follow-up interviews or to take time to meet about it, that is available. We can make that happen.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. You would not be the first council ever that went through an interview weekend like this and said, you know, we want to do a second interview of this person, or we want to do a second interview of these two people. That would, that would not be, you know, unusual, but like I said, most of the time, we find with this process, this really gives people enough chance to really get to know the candidates and really kind of assess how they think they would fit in, you know, with the community and with the position. And usually, by the time we get to the end of this process, everybody's ready to make a decision.
Okay. A question that I have for you, Brent, is the interview time, one, two, three, four, take a break for lunch, interview five. What I foresee that as, that could be five different candidates going in a rotation, because I think Mark Jackson had pointed out that we'll have groups. So there'll be this group that's doing interviewing. Am I correct in that, assuming like we'll break up the council, senior management, and then members of our community to come in and be parts of these groups? And if that is so, how many groups do you see doing the interview?
Yep. Yep, so this was, this was the process, very similar to the process we used in Key Act for the city administrator hiring there. And what we had in that case is, we had five candidates, and we had four panels. So each candidate had four interviews, and they had one break time. And that ended up working out really well, and I think everybody was very happy with that. We had, you know, essentially, a community panel, a department head panel, and we had two mayor and council panels. And I think everybody was very, you know, very much liked that. We, again, we can kind of do it however you want, but that's kind of the explanation of how this was set up.
Sure, okay. Do you see intermingling of that, like community management and council being in a group, or do you prefer to keep it separated, community management?
It could be, you know, I, again, it's kind of whatever you want.
Sure.
I think that what we did in, like in the Key Act example, what we did there is, we came up with, and we went, certainly, people could ask their own questions, and we provided them even a sheet that said, don't ask these illegal questions.
Thank you.
You know, always good to know.
Yep.
Always good to have as a reference. But we did provide them a pre-prepared list of questions and said, we want you to ask these questions, but then you can ask other questions if you have them. But what we were trying to do with that process is, we were trying to really, you know, get the community members, for example, you know, the types of things that they're going to want to know as a community member, what we're getting from this city manager, you know, that, you know, essentially, that they're community-minded and that they are good at building partnerships and bridges in the community. You know, with the department heads, certainly, they're concerned about, you know, management philosophy, they're concerned about, you know, just a whole variety of issues. I mean, I haven't found a department head yet that says, I want to be more closely managed, and I don't want, you know, to be-
[laughing]
...way in what I do.
Oh, sure.
I've yet found that, so.
Okay. And then how many people from the community do you foresee, like, you know, as we start to think about who could be on these panels, how many community members do you foresee us wanting to recruit?
It's nice to have, it can keep your panels. Now, your department head panel probably ends up being a little bit larger, but, you know, I think four to six, something like that, the decent number for a panel.
Okay, per panel, all right. Okay. Just gives us an idea of who we should be reaching out to and how many, you know. I don't want all of us going out and recruiting 10 people and having huge groups, so. Greg, I see you are leaning up and have a question?
Well, just in thinking through this interview process and discussing whether, how open and transparent we want to be through this, do you have candidates that want to be interviewed in a closed session? And if so, how do you respond?
Yes, okay. So the way that we will, would plan to approach that is that all the interviews would be essentially closed session. We, you know, we would, we have on our forums, I think that's a, that's a expectation of candidates for this position, that the interviews themselves will be closed. Really, kind of where your public engagement aspect or what you decide to do, that really, that's what Friday night's about, if you want to go there. Now, we've seen everything from, you know, big public reception to, no, just for the mayor and council, you know, or we've seen, you know, we've seen a whole variety of things as far as that goes. So really, I think when you're thinking about, how are we going to get the members of the general public to be able to get to know these candidates, that's more a Friday night question than I think it is a Saturday question.
Okay. Something for us to consider, more that social time, the Friday night. Okay. Does that answer your question, Greg?
It does accept, with the last interview process, year and a half ago, two years ago or whatever, there were some that did not want it to be out in the public, that they were applying for another position, with a concern that would jeopardize their current position.
Sure.
And that's certainly something that does go, and I know that that was, or my understanding was, that was something that you guys had considered a little bit. We certainly hear that, you know, that, you know, that, you know, you may say, hey, we don't want to really rule out any candidates that may be, you know, really good candidates, but just don't want to be named publicly. I mean, we can accommodate the process to handle that, if you want to take that approach.
Okay. So if we did have a candidate that needed to be held, you know, we're private, I can't think of the word I want, no, that is something that we could be respectful of, but if the other candidates wanted to be on the social level, then they could also be a part of that if that's, comes down to it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, I think that's right, yep.
So let's say we have a panel of five, and two of the five said, we need to remain confidential for sake. I think that's something that we would have to entertain at that time. But I do believe, Brent, that as we're advertising, we're saying that that is the possibility that there's going to be a public reception at some point.
And again, that's where you, that's where you guys need to tell me, you know, I think that if we do get that question, it would be helpful to have, you know, kind of what I felt like I've gotten from feedback from you guys so far is exactly what you just said, Mayor, is that we would consider keeping the process private if that was what was needed to, you know, attract good candidates.
And I think when we gather on September 12 to finalize the list, that's when we can get a better grasp and understanding of if that request is made to remain confidential, and then how we would go about those candidates we select on September 12. Would you not agree, Brent, that that's the time that we could really discuss this part of it?
And you may-
No, I'm sorry. But do you feel September 12 is the day really that we could get further into disguising, you know, if somebody needs to remain confidential?
Yeah, if you guys problem with us communicating, if and when we get that question, we basically say, you know, the council would consider keeping the, you know, keeping the process private. If that's the case, I think that that's all we really need to know right now.
Okay. I think, I don't know how the council feels, but I think I would hate to lose out on any potential candidates that might need to make that request. So I think if you could communicate that on our behalf, that would be well. And would you agree, council?
I would, yes.
Yes, all right, all five agree, okay.
Okay, great.
So then we can discuss that in depth at the September 12 special meeting, that if that need arises. Okay.
Yep.
Wonderful. Any other questions, council, regarding the timeline, the schedule of interviews, et cetera? Again, tentative schedule, that's what we're going to try and stick to, you know, if needed, we can go into second interviews or follow-up meetings, et cetera. But this gives us a great opportunity to mark your calendars for these dates and plan. Okay. Anything further than Brent? I feel all good here, council? Yes? Okay. Anything further on your end than Brent?
Nope, I think we've covered everything that I intended to cover.
Okay, wonderful. We will be taking a motion to approve number seven on our agenda, approving the profile position. Is there a motion to make that approval?
Just to clarify, that is this document?
That is the document that is before you?
I mean, we have two documents, one is just the-
One is the letter from Brent, and then the other is the seven-page proposal, position proposal. It's headlined Sheldon Iowa City Manager Position Profile. It is a seven-page document. That is what you are approving. Now, remember, if we need to make any changes, we can get ahold of Brent, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to approve that, support.
Thank you. Questions, comments, further discussion. May I have a roll call, please?
Hamel?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Okay, Brent, thank you for taking the time to speak with us.
I have one question.
Angela does have one question for you.
Brent, when you get that ready, we're not going to advertise the whole position profile on the websites, are we? Or is that what you're actually going to put on those different websites?
What we would ask is, if we can get that position profile posted, you know, potentially even on the front page of your website, and then we'll just steer people there with a link. Is that workable?
I hope so.
We will figure, yes?
Yeah.
If not, we can figure something else out, but it is nice to have, you know, typically, what we're advertising is, you know, it's going to be an ad that's going to be, you know, 100 words or something like that.
Sure, sure.
And then we're going to steer them with a link to, you know, we're going to provide them the email address to submit applications, we're going to provide them a link to the position profile.
Okay. We'll work that out with our website, and I'll, Ange, do you mind getting ahold of Brent, or whatever we need to do with the SCDC? Okay, then she'll follow up with that then on there with you. So thank you for taking the time. We look forward to you doing your part and being back together with you and meeting you in person on September 12.
That sounds great. I really appreciate it, folks, and it's been good working with you so far, and really looking forward to the rest of the process.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Have a great day. We'll talk to you soon.
Thanks.
Okay.
Yep, you too.
All right, bye-bye. That worked great, except for me hitting it in the middle of the meeting, and you having to dial the number. Okay, things will be rolling along with that, starting to advertise for the city manager position. It feels good. Last on our agenda, comments. Any comments? Lyle, anything going on? Council to my left, Brad, Sean, Pete, Greg, Tom, Greg?
Yes, just a reminder, I'm sure, I mean, if you haven't been in contact by Chanel regarding this softball game with the school district, you should be in contact, if you intend to participate, you should be in contact with her soon. She is on vacation this week, but I'm counting on everyone's here at being at the game.
Are we wearing the same shirts we had last time?
It sounds like we're getting new ones.
Oh, okay.
When is that date?
August 15.
Two weeks, two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today, August 15.
5:30 PM.
Plan at warming up during the council meeting? Yes, sir, would you like to play ball with us?
I'd like to.
[inaudible]
Yes, so you're, will you come to the game just in case we need you?
I have not been contacted, so I'll be asking the school if I can take my talents there.
You traitor.
I don't think so.
I think, is he under contract?
Was he at this meeting today? We'll make sure that you get that. We're looking forward to batter up, meeting the new superintendent and celebrating the ball fields that we have out there by the school, so that'll be a great time. Please start practicing, start warming up your arms, warming up the bats. What are you laughing at, Ty?
I've got bats.
Yeah, do you have bats week in March?
I've got a bag full.
I've got a bag full.
I've got a bag full of bats, yeah.
I think we need six outs compared to their three.
We do, yeah. Depends, do we know who's on their team yet? Maybe we should go into closed session for this, I'm kidding. Young people, what are you trying to say?
Their teachers are on, they've got a young teacher.
Okay, this is what I'd like to put out there. We are the City of Sheldon elected officials who represent the community, so if anyone in the community would like to help out the City of Sheldon in this county, please contact any of your elected officials.
We welcome ringers.
We do, please, bring your batting average and we will, yes, sir?
I think I've already done my part.
Okay, you haven't, we thank you for that.
So I did say this morning to the SDC, winning, we want to have fun with this, winning isn't everything, but in our case, it's the only thing.
That's right. If you ain't first, you're, okay. So this was wonderful, thank you very much. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I would just add to your, to your comment.
Sorry.
That we are looking for public support if you're six foot three or in 235 pounds or more, so we need some power behind the bat.
There we go. All right, Brent has made a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, and may I please have a positive roll call?
Kent?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Thank you, Pete. We are adjourned, thank you. The answer's yes.
I didn't hear anything about it.
What time is the game tomorrow?